All right, the time is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Call to order, can I get a roll call please? Are we ready? Okay, Mayor Walters, she will be a few minutes late. Michelle Cordes is here. John Anderson.
Here.
Kristin Rodriguez.
Here.
Judy Hughes.
Here.
Arthur Neal.
Here.
And Johnny Mendoza.
Here.
All right, if we could all stand for a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item will be called to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Do we have any call to the publics?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we do have one individual, Kathy Adams.
Okay, Ms. Adams.
But we have more.
Mayor Walter in absentia, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me speak, Kathy Adam, 240 East Ruggles, Florence, Arizona. I have come tonight to ask the council not to build the Public Works project on Ruggles Street. While the zoning issues are about as clear as mud to me, in the words of our town attorney, "The council has full discretion in the policy choice of whether to build the building at all." So I'd ask you to please consider. This building is detrimental to the peace and tranquility of the longtime residents and property owners, and most likely is not a positive regarding their property values. This is a two-story massive, two-city block metal commercial structure fronting historic Ruggles Street. It's also fronting the front yards of the neighborhood residences on all sides, except the existing Public Works building, which would make this stretch to three city blocks. The mass of this building significantly impacts the peace and tranquility, the sightlines, the airflow, and the views for every single property owner. Two, it's detrimental to the historic district. Ruggles is a historic street named for the man who laid out the grid of Florence today and who lived on this street. It is the home to McFarland State Park and eight placked historic buildings, all of which are regularly on our Town of Florence's home tour. There are eight homes on Ruggles that have invested significantly monies to improve our properties, and one home was the recipient of our CDBG grant to build a new home on Ruggles. Three, this project has never been vetted with the public as the absolute best land use solution against other alternatives. What is the town's compelling reason for putting this here versus any other place within the town boundaries? Shouldn't all other alternatives be considered before disrupting a neighborhood community like this? Four, it's time to stop paying lip service to supporting the historic district. The value of the $275,000 downtown rehabilitation grant program hails next to the 3 million-plus out-of-place edifice greeting our visitors to our downtown and staring the residents in the face of their own front yards. Five, the community deserves to be heard. Council, the people are speaking directly to you in every opportunity we have, which are few and far between. The residents, property owners, townspeople, business entities, historians, preservationists, and the chamber have all spoken plainly of our objections to this project. The ball is in your court. As our attorney stated, "The council has full discretion in the policy choice of whether to build the building at all." We respectfully ask you to make the right choice and not proceed with the building on Ruggles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Do we have anybody online that would like to speak?
Vice Mayor, we have two others that want to speak.
Oh, we have two others. Oh, I apologize.
Sorry, Chris Reed.
Ms. Reed.
Chris Reed, 125 West Ruggles. I am a resident of Ruggles. Hopefully you've all read the letter that I sent to you. I'd like to amend a little fact in there. I originally mentioned that it was just over four acres of land that the town occupies on Ruggles for government storage and operation services. I didn't count the leased parking lot just across the street from Public Works. So that makes it almost five acres of land on Ruggles Street, the entrance to our historic district, our entrance to Main Street, dedicated to non-inviting kinds of things. So I just don't really understand why you would persist in this. It's just, to me, it's ridiculous, it's excessive. Five acres is a lot. So I don't know what you're thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. There's a second person in the audience as well that wished to speak this evening?
Annie, Annie James.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. My name is Annie Hymus. I live on Silver Street, 324 North Silver Street, Florence, Arizona. I have a personal stake in this Public Works building issue. My house faces directly the Public Works building that's proposed. And it's huge. And that's what I would be looking out my front door. My home is a historic home. It's the Andrónico Loronia home, built in 1886. And I'm in the process of renovating as we speak. I'm a little bit outside of the historic district, but I think if we're to include some of the older homes in my neighborhood, I would be included in that. My other family home is here in Florence on Third Street, 200 East Third Street, and it is the PC Warner home. We've been on the historic tour many times, and we love our Old Town of Florence. To put the Public Works building as large as it is and as monolithic as it is, I just can't even see how that would improve our property values or the tranquility of our lifestyle. So in closing, I just want to mention, it's personal to me, but I have gathered a lot of signatures of people who feel exactly the same way. And I just think that we need to be heard. I don't begrudge Public Works. Everybody wants a nice place to work, but we also need a nice place to live. So that's my two cents, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I apologize, that's the first time I've heard that noise. So that was the timer that went off for three minutes. It is the first time it has ever gone off, so. And I see a Ms. Courtney Ramirez. And you are unmuted.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, we can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to echo the other two gals. With regards to the Public Works building, you know, we all get that we're growing and things need to be done and all that, but you know, it seems like so much has been done. Money spent, the lots bought, you know, way before the public input had, you know, the public was even able to give their input. So, you know, there's, what, 50,000 probably in the lots alone? 10,000 in architecture, I think if the numbers are right on that, 3 million on the building. I attended the work session last Monday with regards to this project. And, you know, it seems like it's basically going to be used as a big storage shed plus a couple of offices. And, you know, again, it just doesn't seem like it's the best thing to put there on top of the money that's going to be spent on it. And, you know, Tara, I had asked you that evening afterwards, you know, the 3 million on that project, with the current Public Works building that's there, you know, I even questioned, isn't it the best to maybe even modify that current building? And Tara flat out said that that building was not able to be modified, which I don't believe at all. Any building is able to be modified. And so if there's a need to provide, you know, shelving and a couple of offices, partitions could be put in that current building, provide a couple of offices. And, you know, we all know that shelves can be installed in any building to allow storage. So I think the public input, you know, should be heard amongst the council members when deciding on what to do. And if the public needs to follow the rules that's there for zoning and whatnot, you know, any government office should have to do the same thing. It's just not, not right for you guys to think that, you know, just because you're the government, you can do it. You know, the people should be heard on this too. And, you know, if it's an absolute need, just figure out how to modify the current building to allow that storage and a couple of offices and save the taxpayers' money for that. And thanks for listening.
You're welcome. Just going back for a point of clarification, which is written in our call to the public for just addressing some things. And if any member of council wants to add or clarify anything further, please feel free to do so. However, in going back and addressing the comment that was just made regarding public process, public process started in 2019, as documented in previous town meetings. And that was also brought forward at our last work session. We believe in being very public, very transparent and working. Part of that conversation in 2019 was also addressing all of the issues that had occurred, both in regards to trash recycling, which ended up resulting in the plans for an eco station, and then moving also into, you know, there were different Public Works projects at that time. And unfortunately, you know, costs, delay in repairing certain projects. It was brought forward that they needed an area so that they could, you know, save taxpayers' money, purchase things in bulk, store things. The current facilities were not what the Public Works Department needed. So this has been in the plans and in the works for three years. However, we've listened, we're continuing to listen, and we've heard from residents that surround that area. And at our last work session, our council had discussed specifically, you know, removing that eco station component from the project with the reasoning of we've had increased usage and compliance with using the bulk trash, the many dump days that not only the town provides, but that the county also provides. And we do have a county supervisor with us here today. Thank you, Mr. Cerdi, for being here. And last but not least, when it comes to that building, I did not state that it could not be revamped. I said, "That's not what we were discussing." What we were discussing was the addition of the new building. And within that conversation, Mr. Salas had made the statement regarding moving the wells. And I want to say, and I would need to go back to record to confirm the $1 amount, but it was somewhere between like 3 to 5 or 3 to 6 million dollars to move those wells. Well, from my perspective, where we sit, we're talking about, you know, the rodeo grounds and the water situation there and the wells. And, you know, we want to make sure that, again, that taxpayer dollars are being spent fiscally responsibly and that, at the same time, we're providing a service to all residents. And again, that was just my comment to what I heard. Did I miss anything that shouldn't be further addressed?
Well, I think that one thing that I am understanding is that the town clerk promised to look at other properties and they were going to come back and give us a list of all the other properties in town that this building might be moved to. So I personally agree, I don't think this building should go at the proposed location. And I would like to see other alternative sites proposed.
I would just add that the building can be retrofitted, it can be upgraded. We can go spend $3 million on that building, but it's not going to address the issue of storage. So yeah, we could add some offices and some shelves and things like that. I think that would be a very expensive rehab if that's all we were going to do was some offices and shelving, but there's still going to be the storage issue. So I think it's important that no matter which way we go or what conversation you're having about where the new build, where the new heart should go, we all have to understand and grasp that the current building does not serve our needs, even if we go in and we rehab it. We can't add more acreage to that lot. We can't make that lot bigger, which is what we need. We need more storage space. The building, the building is used, all square feet of that building is used. And some spaces, as we heard, are being multitasked and used for more than one purpose. They're an office, there is storage, there are that. So I just want to make sure everybody remembers that. That building is not something that we would want to invest a lot of money into rehabbing because it still will not fill the need that we have as far as storage. The rest of the conversation will happen when it comes back before council.
All right, I don't see anything further from council, but I just wanted to take a moment to clarify that. Just a point, because I saw some hands raised, and I just want to go over procedural guidelines for a call to the public. That's not the time that dialogue goes between back and forth. So if there's any further comments, questions, discussion that needs to occur, please reach out to us. We can have a conversation, an email, and then whatever's discussed, just like we did in the previous work session. We'll make sure that everybody's informed of the questions or comments that occur. Or there's a second call to the public. All right, moving on to our closing call to the public, our public hearings and presentation. Item A is going to be removed this evening just because our outstanding employee that's being recognized was unable to be here this evening. So we're going to put that on a future agenda. Item number B is an introduction of Penal County Supervisor, Mr. Jeff Cerdi. And thank you so much, sir, for being here this evening.
Since 5:45, by the way. This is my executive assistant, Mishka, back there. Some of you may have met her, she has her own YouTube video. So I want to introduce myself. With the new census, we had to redistrict. And the whole state is redistricted for the congressional districts, the state legislatures, and supervisors. And we're going to pull up a map here in a second. We can bring that up now and let them look at it while I do some other things. The, probably heard that the county had a snafu about the election. Luckily, your election was not touched for some reason. It was human error. Of course, everybody jumps to conclusions because of some of the problems with 2020. Oh, here we go again. But it was equally messed up for everyone. No one got an advantage because, as you know, the municipal elections are nonpartisan. So it wasn't one side against the other. But you guys were untouched, but the other, seven other communities were. So you guys are growing all different directions. I'm always amazed. I, sometimes I feel like I'm in San Tan Valley, and I look up and I'm actually in Florence. You guys are all the way over there. And if I can point here, it's not going to work, but if you follow the red line, what District 5 was before was basically Apache Junction to Florence Junction to Queen Valley, and then down, and it took in the northern part of San Tan Valley. San Tan Valley was so big, it had, it was the smallest district with the most people. District 1, where you were, was the largest district with the least people. So we had to make it equal to come out about 80-some thousand people each. And District 2 at San Tan Valley had 110,000 people. But we've reached those goals. And to do that, I gave up the San Tan Valley area. But District 5 now takes in all of the mountains, all the way to top of the world and Superior, and then all of the Copper Corridor, all the way down Superior, Kearney, Winkleman, and all of the tourism. I think Mayor Tara, you know that I've been a tourism advocate forever. And now that, okay, I'm going to keep going. Down, I rap to the east of Florence to take in the river bottom, Country Thunder. And then to the north of Florence, I have the, down in the magma area down there, which gives me 80-some thousand people. But with Country Thunder, what District 5 has, we have the playground of the rest of the county. The rest of the county brags on their electric cars and possible battery plants coming. But we have the mountains, the gateway to the lakes, and the copper. So I have four items, four attractions that have 200, 250,000 visitors a year, that being the ghost town, Lost Dutchman State Park, the Renaissance Festival, the Arboretum, and Country Thunder. So we are the playground of Penal County, and we're proud of it. Because of all those visitors, you know, when COVID was sprung upon us, 5 million people in the valley now, and they didn't travel, they stayed local. And they went to the mountains. And the mountains were not ready for that. What if everybody goes in the same weekend? How do you handle that? So one of the things that I've started is a public land managers meeting with National Forest Fish and Game, BLM, state land, Penal County Sheriff, Maricopa County Sheriff, and all of the PDs. And I think you attended one, didn't you? Yes, he's been there. Just to handle, you know, what is going to happen with, you know, if everybody comes. And they're, what they do is the parking lots fill up, and then they park in people's yards, and they just try to go into the mountain. And we, the county is going to be rolling out their first county park out Peralta Road. There again, when it fills up, what's going to happen with it? So that's exciting news. And going to make even yet another attraction to draw people out here. Then it's up to the communities like yourself to capture on that. You're kind of on the fringe, but still, if people come here, they're going to say, hey, what else is there to do? And Florence has some cool stuff as well. A little bit about my background. I was a former councilperson and mayor in Apache Junction. So I know what you guys are up against. A lot of county supervisors, it's always been a little bit of antagonistic. But you can't do everything off the backs of the city, just like you guys that have been up there long enough. They always want to balance the budget, so let's take the HERF. They don't really need that, do they? But then you got to find alternative ways to fix your road. So I understand where you guys are coming from, and I want to mend those fences and have a better relationship with the county and the cities and towns. Started another community group, which is kind of on hold. I've turned it over to the Economic Development Director. But you probably heard about the 11,000 acres that was put up for sale in between Peralta and Gold Canyon. Something big was going to come in there that was going to affect everybody. It ended up not happening, and it reverted back. But it showed a need to, I think we can almost all agree, we have enough houses everywhere. It's just been houses and houses and houses. And over 90% of the people in Penal County work in Maricopa County. So if you look at the map up there, in between Apache Junction and San Tan and your northern area, you got that sea of blue there? Let's put the employment in there and quit knocking off with the houses, just do the infill. So this group is to possibly try to assist that and get the infrastructure, which everybody's aware of, the half-cent sales tax that was not done right. 80-some million dollars raised. I still think we should fight for that money. As of right now, they decided they're going to give it back to the retailers. It's not the retailers, there's money. It means it's going to go back to Bentonville, Arkansas, where Walmart is, and Cincinnati, Ohio, where Kroger is. That needs to go back to the county to steward it so that we can start the 24 to north-south corridor. With the 24 is on its way. Everybody, even the West Valley, where knows it needs to happen. But the north-south and in the Parkway that's going to go along that, that is going to greatly relieve things and make you guys be able to get into the metro area better. And also, when you do travel on 60, you know, with just two lanes, that would, the 24 would bypass that. It would keep all the trucks coming all the way from New Mexico, the copper mine. They would then have to dedicate a truck route where they'd have to exit and go on the 24. And we've also looked ahead and saw that the surface street, Ray, needs to come in between there so that everything can grow. And the locals can use Ray instead of staying off of the high-traffic areas. Just talk with your fire chief. Everybody's aware of the tragedy that happened to the south of here. Because of that and some other communications we've had with other chiefs, we're going to get started again and have all the chiefs in the whole county have a meeting to talk about the 911 service. And a lot of the cert communities are losing what they do have. It wasn't perfected yet, or else that wouldn't have happened. So that is, and I do have a date, it's going to be August 18th. So I look forward to that and making sure that everybody's protected everywhere as much as possible. I mean, some people that choose to live, you know, and they're still going to be at risk. Whereas, all the supervisors are streamlining their offices. I am going to have the one office in Apache Junction, but I did add two members of staff, so we're reachable. If you call my office or if you stop in, someone is there, they will open the door, they'll let you in. There, this, when this was District 1, there was one down in Dudleyville. That's still going to be there, but it's going to be staffed by staff members, no supervisor staff. And also, if need be, if you call, then we will come to you as well, for those of you that are in my district. The rest of you are in District 4, which is Mr. McClure, and the ones close to San Tan Valley would be District 2, Mike Goodman. So what else do we do? Oh, Highway 88, that's another thing that I've got a group working on. I've started all these groups. I don't do it myself, but what I am good at is organizing people that can. You know, several years ago, they blamed it on a fire, but I don't think it was because there was no vegetation up there anyway. But one of the tourist attractions is Highway 88 up to Fish Creek Hill and all the lakes. And as of right now, it's closed, and the governor had no intention of opening it. But we're forcing his hand, we're gaining steam to get the legislature to appropriate money to repair Fish Creek Hill. Because, I mean, if I have tourists, that's the first place I take them. It's, to me, it's as cool as a Grand Canyon and much nicer than Sedona. And it affects the rest of the county, because when you take the whole tour all the way around, you end up coming back through Superior and Florence Junction. By the time you get to Superior, you're out of gas, you're out of food. And so everybody, everybody hurts in the whole East Valley when Highway 88 is not open. And some of the things, we're waiting, excuse my voice, I'm all hyped up on Musinex right now. We're waiting on a new governor. Another thing that I'm going to be rolling out to the public land managers meeting is, you see all the sea of blue up there, state land, and they have almost no employees. And when something happens there... And when something happens there, our tax dollars, we have to go patrol it for them. State land has plenty of money. They need to get their own law enforcement agency going. They generate so much money. Yet if something happens, Sheriff Lamb or on the fringe of the cities have to go out and patrol their land. It's time they start carrying their paying their own fair share. So once we have a new governor, I'm going to be introducing that to them as well. And one more thing, you might have saw that I voted against the budget the other day. I was for the budget. But what I was against is the automatic increase in property taxes. They have been going up, so yes, the property taxes go up. You can cut taxes. But if they say your house is worth more, you still pay more taxes. And right now it's automatic. So if a recession slash depression comes, your taxes are still going to go up. They need to be able to monitor that and lower them accordingly. And the county, I mean, we've been kind of a poorer county, but we're on the verge with the electric car and everything that's coming. So we're gonna, we're gonna be able to be much more self sufficient. The taxes should come down. Everybody wants, one of the things you always hear is is how why do we have the highest taxes in the whole state? It needs to not be that way. So that's just to touch on a little bit of everything. Some of you up there have my contact info. If you have questions, contact my staff and I know certain, this is not a work session, but can you interact with me and ask questions?
Absolutely, during a presentation, we can.
Okay.
Vice Mayor. Um, that all sounded so wonderful. But what I would like to add to you and the rest of your supervisors, and I've spoken with Goodman many, many times, is that although we see all this improvement happening in Queen Creek and San Tan and Apache Junction, that's fantastic for over there. We have major roads over here that are thorough, thorough thoroughfares, thank you. For people to get from ten to the sixty, to get from Coolidge to San Tan Valley or Queen Creek or Apache Junction. I'm talking Hunt Highway, seventy nine and Felix. No, not Felix, Ataway. Ataway is a mess and needs to be addressed. Um, Hunt Highway, the expansion needs to happen down the entire road. It should be four lanes all the way. The traffic is there, the amount of people are there and seventy nine needs to be expanded. It's crazy to me that seventy nine is a two lane road. And people are driving eighty miles an hour on that road. It is dangerous. We need to think about our citizens that live on this side as well. And so I would really like to see the county focus on these main roads. I I see all these great little roads in Queen Creek getting done and I'm sitting there going, that's like a neighborhood road to me. We have major roads that are called highways for a reason that need to be addressed. So I would love to see those projects get pushed to the front. Because all of Penal County uses those roads and they're dangerous roads right now. And so we need to see some some attention to them. And I would really appreciate to see that. And I know I've brought it up in our East Valley Transportation Meeting before. So I would love to just see some action come our way on those roads. Thank you.
Everything you says makes sense. And the balls were dropped twenty, if not more than twenty years ago. And we're we're just now catching up. And four lanes, I think some of those roads may even need to be six lanes. And I credit Supervisor Goodman, who's recognizing that because he's inherited that mess. When I was mayor and council member of Apache Junction, Ironwood backs up tremendously to get on the freeway. And then they all go do U turns up at the high school. You could write tickets there all day. So the twenty four is going to relieve that. But then the twenty four needs to be punched through. And then the north south interconnect. And then another of Mike Goodman's ideas is the Parkway, which kind of think of the what's the road that runs next to one oh one in Tempe? Rural Road, how it's kind of just a frontage road. He has the idea to do that, which would greatly relieve it. And I know what you mean about Ataway. I used to never, when I were, I would go to Tucson, I wouldn't go Florence Junction or the ten. I would go down Ironwood and then skirt across to Ataway to Coolidge. So that would be so cool to have that. And it is on the radar, but it's we're like ten, twelve years behind. We really are. And as for seventy nine being widened, maybe when these other things get done, it doesn't need to be widened, but that's basically a state route anyway. So that would be more of an A dot thing, the next governor. And the same way with the sixty, the sixty needs needs to be widened as well, so.
I think Michelle said a lot of the comments that I was going to make regarding transportation. You know, we can only do so much when you go when regards to economic development or the growth of Florence and making sure that we're responsible on our end. But there's only so much we can do when a lot of our transportation relies on ADOT or Penal County. A lot of our hands are tied. Um, I think that a lot of the the hot topic situations, infrastructure wise, she's already discussed. But even, you know, if we can get everybody in the same room. And that's one thing that I think Penal County can really focus on is it's not necessarily all Penal Counties. I don't want to say fault, but responsibilities. Um, but even just getting the key players in the room and actually pushing for those items would be really greatly appreciated. Um, even looking at coming from the ten and trying to come over, you have to go down and around and through the mountains and over through, you know, trying to find some type of overpass, trying to find some way through that, you know, the Indian Reservation area. You know, just even just getting somebody so that we can get a voice at the table. So we can actually have people. Yeah, exactly. Have people actually advocate for Florence. I think a lot of the economic development items, we get frustrated and we see Superior and to see all the people. It's fantastic for them, but we want people to also recognize that Florence is here and we need the assistance as well.
I didn't realize when running for this position, but ninety percent of what it entails is roads. They want new roads, they want better roads, fix the roads they already have. And it it may seem like a little more glamorous position that being councilor mayor. But I still get pothole questions and barking dogs and lights shining in windows. It's the same thing. You're just the mayor for the outlying areas as well. But it's, yes, it's ninety percent roads. And if we had better roads, then you could, you know, work on other problems that are easier fixes. But roads, we're way behind the eight ball for sure.
Yes, when I look at the budget. I guess I get when I look at the budget for Penal County, I get very frustrated when I see a lot of heavy staffing and not a lot to the infrastructure when I feel like the infrastructure serves more of the public in a better way than being heavy in staffing. Been understanding, obviously, you need adequate staffing to make the roads, but there's just a balance there, I guess. So I just want to make sure that we're using the Penal County funds that they receive, that they they actually use them in a way that serves all of the county. So.
Councilmember Hughes, did you have something? I wanted to say so far we have had other supervisors that Mr. McClure has come and spoken to us as well. And Mr. Goodman, Supervisor Goodman always reaches out and communicates as well. So I feel that Florence is in a great position in regards to having three supervisors that are servicing our area. So all of you are listening to, you know, what our concerns are and what we're bringing forward. So we are appreciative, appreciative of that and know that you're advocating because we've had conversations too about different areas and what's county, what state. And I guess what's unique about our area is the fact that there are so many entities involved. In the town of Florence municipal boundaries, we also have roads that partner to Coolidge where half of the road is Coolidge, half of the road is Florence. So there's so many entities that need to work together to actually make a project come together that you hit the nail on the head when you said, you know, we're not only are we twenty years behind, but now we have all of the key players finally to the table to have these conversations to say, what are the issues? You know, Vice Mayor sits on a committee for transportation and she's, you know, bringing these forward. You're communicating as well, so I can see some great things happening in that aspect in the next.
And you could throw into that mix too, the difference between CAG and MAG and how MAG is so much more powerful. And when you're with MAG, then you're talking about over in the Cardinal Stadium area. They all want to do stuff over there and we want to do it over here. But as we grow, we are finally starting to get the attention. And I said, I kind of speak honestly, you know, it's always, you know, Apache Junction was always a poorer city. Why can't we have this? Why can't we have that? And and I see Florence the same way. Now Queen Creek starting to boom, they're getting stuff. And I was talking with Mr. Anderson about how easy it would be to be a council member in Chandler where you have Intel, where Intel just, oh yeah, we need six more police cars. There you go, Chuck, you know, that's, but we're getting that with the electric car plants and LG, which is on hold for right now, but it probably will come back. But as more of those come up, we should be able to, you know, get more amenities and and lower the taxes, so. And then in the meantime, all of you cities are doing cool stuff too to to generate what you need to get, so.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. I have one more. A great way to connect us all would be some public transportation other than cart that only services a very small section of Florence. It will not go to Anthem. So we can't even get from Anthem into Historic Florence. It comes to Historic Florence does a loop and then leaves us. So if you guys could figure out a way to maybe get some public transportation to connect us to Queen Creek or to connect us to Apache Junction, that would be fantastic. And I'm sure our citizens would greatly appreciate that because it would help them expand their job search.
And and those have been talked about as well with Apache Junction being right on the border of Mesa. Why doesn't the bus service come out? And they tried it once, it it wouldn't make money any anywhere to the east of power. But I think when you go down to Coolidge, they have, what is it, the Cotton Express? I'm not sure.
The cart system.
What's that?
The cart system.
Yeah. So something like that might be the answer, but it it can come with with more. Just need more, the rooftops are coming in here and they're already scheduled out. Talking about being ten years behind. I'm amazed to look at the flats of what's already been planned. It's it's going to fill in even more, so definitely a need for it.
So we have the cart system for sure, but we do need to make that connect into Anthem. And we've talked about that even being a local, um, you know, venture with a, you know, us purchasing something and providing that. However, you also served on MAG. So we have that like fifty year plan that comes out where eventually there's a rail and there's transportation. But again, everything, I just wanted to communicate, it takes time to get it into place.
Yeah.
You remember the plan I'm talking about, right? By twenty fifty four, which seems forever away.
Right.
We will not all be dead.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me and that's what my office is about and we're reachable. And hope to see uh, when we do have these meetings, these public meetings, we will, you know, gladly have you guys and any of you that want to sit in on any of anything that looks interesting, feel free. Just let us know.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I apologize for the change in the meeting time this evening. We were trying to be accommodative of requests that had come in regarding a conflict in the community in the time, so.
That's okay. I got to, I got to catch up on Facebook a lot, so.
Excellent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member remember the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A ratification of the interagency agreement with Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens, DBA Meals on Wheels of Central Arizona to provide senior nutrition services to elderly Florence residents. B ratification of the vehicle lease agreement with Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens Incorporated to provide one two thousand and eleven Ford bus for senior transportation services to the town of Florence. Item C, approval of the mutual aid agreement between the Tahono O Horem Nation and the town of Florence. Item D, approval to accept a donation from the Colmina Group in the amount of ten thousand dollars to specifically fund youth programs for arts, science, sports and other youth programs at the discretion of the town. Item E, approval of the May second, twenty twenty two town council meeting minutes. Item F, receive and file the following advisory boards and commission minutes. One, Historic District Advisory Commission for May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Two, Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes for June sixteenth, twenty twenty two. And C, accept the registered demands ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two in the amount of three million, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Now, I know glasses, three million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, five dollars and ninety three cents. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any idea that anybody would like removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item eight is new business. A, motion to adopt resolution number eighteen thirty two dash twenty two, which is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, accepting grant funds from the Gila Town Indian Community on behalf of the Penal County Historical Society in the amount of eighteen thousand, seventy five dollars. Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. The Penal County Historical Society is in the process of receiving these grant funds from the Gila River Indian Community. Um, they applied for the funds to be able to complete improvements to their exterior exhibits. They plan to install two ADA ramps and I believe some sidewalks as well as interpretive signage in that area. So as part of the process with tribal gaming, these nonprofits are not able to receive the funds directly. And so they have to partner with the town to receive the funds on their behalf and then turn around and release those funds to the the organization. And we have done that a couple of times in the last five years with the Historical Society uh, when they've received tribal game gaming funds. So there's definitely a precedent for it. And the process is that we receive the the check from the tribe and then turn around and issue that funding directly to the Historical Society. So it's a pretty simple process that we're able to accomplish in within a week or so. So we do have representatives from the Historical Society here tonight. We have Stephanie Joyner, the executive director, as well as Kathy Adam, the president. So I'm sure they're able to answer any specific questions about their project.
Ms. Joyner, would you like to come up and share anything further? Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, I'm Stephanie Joyner. I'm the executive director of the Penal County Historical Museum here in Florence. I'm really excited to share about this project for our outdoor display upgrades. As Jennifer Evans mentioned, this is ADA accessible ramps for two structures in our outdoor display area that is a homesteaders cabin and a blacksmith shop full of blacksmith implements from our local blacksmith here in Florence. This also includes ADA pathways, so everyone can access all of our great outdoor displays. And this is also a big introductory interpretive signage. Think of what you see at National Park Service. Tall and weather resistant, we get a lot of sun and wind out here. We need signage that supports that. And then it's one introductory display and then fourteen displays throughout.
Thank you so much. That sounds amazing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Would that we need a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number one eight three two dash two two.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Really excited. We have a lot of amazing things that happen at our museum and, you know. Thank you so much for bringing that forward. Items. Wait, I moved the wrong chair. Managers report. Mr. Kraus, how are you this evening?
Fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a few items to update the council on and give you a heads up on some issues. As you recall, you considered a conditional use permit for self storage facility at your last council meeting and you deferred it back to the planning commission. And since that time, staff has met with the owner and worked out an issue on hours of operation, the wall design as well as uses. So some additional restrictions are going is being proposed and and I believe they're acceptable to the owner. It's going back to the Planning Commission this Thursday at their regular meeting. Also, I wanted to alert the council to Western Crossings. It's a subdivision. Uh, Phase One was approved back over fifteen years ago. It's east of Centennial Park Avenue, uh, just north of SR seventy nine. And that particular subdivision, the the D R Horton, uh, or their representative is looking at grading that particular site and there's some work being done now. The Phase Two plat is on the agenda for the commission for this Thursday as well. And so there is, there may be some activity on there for cleaning and getting the vegetation ready for grading, mass grading permit has been issued by the the Public Works Department. So I just wanted to alert you to that in case you get calls regarding any activity over there. And then lastly, I'm I'm pleased to And then lastly, I'm, I'm pleased to uh, let you know that um, we are coming back to the mayor, uh, council on um, August fifteenth, your agenda to um, re, reignite or um, kind of uh, rejuvenate the territorial square project. It's been, been um, somewhat languishing. Staff uh, has been working with a consultant on a um, comprehensive infrastructure and a utility plan, and that's completed. So we would like to bring back that on the August fifteenth agenda. Talk about the vision for the, the, the plan as well as reviewing some design elements and where we go forward from uh, here. So those are the, those are the items that I wanted to alert you to. And that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Any specific questions for the manager this evening? Thank you very much for your report. We have our second call to the public, if anybody would like to speak at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Sheri Har, I live at three two five North Warner Street. I also wanted to ask Vice Mayor, you say that there's storage that's needed. I just need to know what type of storage is needed. The residents already deal with the ugliness of the current building along with noises early in the morning, sometimes beginning at six AM, which is usually the norm. Beautification of the current building, it has barbed wire along the top of the eight-foot chain link fence. There's some type of meshing, probably, obviously that is old and ripped. Um, our family has lived in our home since nineteen forty-three. There are more options available to you for storage versus the one that you have um, considered, especially when it's in the main corridor into Florence, which is Ruggles Road. We, the people, have spoken. Now, we shall see if you, the council, are willing to actually listen and vote against the place that we call our neighborhood for decades. You want us to abide by public meeting laws, which you stated earlier, Mayor, yet you don't abide by them. You didn't ask, you didn't do a close to the public, that's why we had our hands up. In two thousand and nineteen, when this was mentioned briefly, but I had an echo, an echo station, I didn't think any of us in the community members had a clue of what was actually envisioned by council, but now we know. On a second note, mutual aid agreement. We're currently short-staffed in the police department. So how will this affect the community if our police department is called upon? Well, we have adequate, adequate coverage still here for us community members. I know at times there are currently only one officer at Anthem and one officer here in Historical Florence. It's not fair to them, their safety, nor our safety. Thank you.
Just for the record, I did close the call to the public. And also, Chief, would you like to respond to that or would you like to reach out to her after?
I'll reach out to her afterwards, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during call to the public? Seeing no hands raised in person or online, closing call to the public, call to the council, current events only. Councilmember Mendoza.
Once again, I appreciate you guys coming up. And I want you to know that we are listening. Now things are going to change. We're listening. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Hughes.
I agree with Johnny. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I always want to thank our public for coming out and speaking. We always appreciate um, the input and being able to assess all of our options with whatever decision we're making, um, especially ones that impact our citizens directly. Um, you know, something they see outside their house too, certainly want to make sure that we are doing the best we can to serve our public. Um, also on a lighter note, uh, it's back to school, which is why we were all running late today. And so we wanted to, I just wanted to remind everyone to please drive safe, uh, make sure that our children are taken care of in the schools. I know we've great, got great police officers, but take it upon ourselves in the community to sort of make sure that everybody is getting there safely and, and to be watching for those children.
Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Anderson.
I want to thank all the people who uh, spoke tonight on all the issues. Uh, I think the building is still a very controversial thing and uh, I personally uh, am opposed to that building going at that site. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Uh, well, I really didn't have anything, but I will uh, correct a statement or not correct it, I will just add to it. Um, at the last meeting, at the work session, we discussed the storage need and the lack of storage space at the current site. So there is a, there is a lack of storage, um, and it's for various equipment. And it was all listed at that meeting. Um, if you would like the minutes from that, I'm sure you can request them from staff to get them or find them online. Um, other than that, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Well, in going through the agenda, I was really excited and I'm thankful um, for the donation that came forward from the Coal Mina Group. I'm always very appreciative and supportive of items, especially that positively impact our youth. So thank you for working and seeking that out and bringing that forward. If there's any way that I can be of assistance, please let me know. Um, as Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, school is starting on Wednesday, so please just be a little extra cautious, drive safe. Would you have some new friends joining Kinder for the first time? And Chief, thank you for having the officers present, making sure that the community continues to feel safe while our children go to school. I want to say thank you to everybody who came to the meeting tonight and who spoke, as well as those who reach out via email or however, because this is our community. And when I say ours, this is everybody here, everybody that is Florence, Arizona, and we want the best. We want to make sure that we're all working together. That's why originally when this came about in two thousand and nineteen, we had conversations that continually evolves and grows. And just like at the last work session, as I mentioned before, we're listening, we hear what you're saying and we're trying to work towards a positive solution. So I appreciate everybody who's bringing forward different ideas and suggestions and avenues for us to continue to explore. And I do appreciate, you know, us keeping it on a very, what's the word that I'm looking for? Thank you. I was looking for cordial. When we communicate well, when we're communicating with good intent to work together for a positive outcome, that's what we receive, that's, that's what transpires. And that's how I always conduct myself, is with good intent. So, with that, I just want to say thank you. I also want to apologize once more, I know Supervisor Cerdy left, but originally we um, have our meetings planned for six PM. We did try to make some accommodations just so everybody, both community-wise, council-wise, we all wanted to be able to come together and um, be here for our meetings. So thank you so much. That concludes the meeting. With nothing further, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn from regular meeting?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned.